Good evening, everybody.
Hey Joe.
Hello.
Hey. Good evening. I would like to call to order the March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, Rantham Select Board meeting. In accordance with chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, this public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. As a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Chair Joseph Botesh. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, present.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo here.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington here.
Select Board Member Ross.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Greg Enos.
Present.
And Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo.
Present.
All right. Well, we thank you all for being here. We have a large agenda to go through. So we're going to jump into tab one announcements and ask our clerk if he would wouldn't mind reading those announcements.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Announcements for this evening. Debt exclusion ballot. Rantham voted in favor of the tri-county school building project in October twenty three. Now residents are voting on whether to authorize the town to raise the amount needed outside the levy limit to make principal and interest payments on the thirty year bond. Each year, the town would add would add to the total amount of the tax levy, the specific amounts needed for that year to pay the annual principal and interest payment. If no debt exclusion were used, the town would need to absorb the cost of annual payments within the existing tax levy. Based upon the size of the debt payments is the town's position that raising such funds within the levy limit would reduce the amount of funds available for town operations, services, and other projects. Departments of Such as elementary, education, police, and fire may significantly be impacted. Vacancy, the zoning board of appeals is seeking interest of volunteers to join. There are currently three vacancies, two full member and two associate members. See the town website volunteer opportunities for application details. The Rantham Lions Club is pleased to announce that we'll be offering four scholarships to the area graduating seniors, including one scholarship that will also be available for quality that will also be available for qualified adult residents seeking to continue their education. Applications are available now and will be accepted until April second, twenty twenty four. Scholarship criteria, applications, and directions for submittal can be found on the Rantham Lions website at www.ranthamlions.org. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Amanda, I know some people are having trouble with agendas, and you just sent out. But I have, I'm having trouble opening the new one. We are still working off of the agenda from one forty-nine P M. On March fourteenth, correct?
Yeah, nothing in the packet or agenda changed. It's just a couple of people had trouble locating it and opening it, so I sent out a new one, so it'd be in the top of your inboxes.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, let's jump over to Tab Two real quick. In the chair and entertainer motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from March fifth.
So moved.
So the motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectman Gallo, is there any further discussion? Being none, we're going to go to a roll call vote. Uh, we're going to start with Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Okay, that passes five zero. I I I'm going to jump around a little because I know we have a lot of people on the meeting tonight. Uh, we have a couple of things, one tab, it's time, sorry, Tab Three, Tab Four, which we could probably hold for a little bit. And, uh, I saw Mister Caspar is on here, so I'm not sure if he's here for just Tab Five. So let's jump over to Tab Five. And, uh, I would ask, we in Tab Five, we have an acceptance of resignation from William Burns from the zoning board of appeals. We have a letter from Mister Burns. I would ask our clerk if he would read it into the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, to Mister Bot, Joseph F. Botash, Mister William Casparra, letter of resignation dated March fifteenth. I'm writing to you, I'm writing to inform you about my decision to leave my position as a board member on the Rantham Zoning Board of Appeal, effective March fifteenth. It has been an honor to serve, but I find it necessary to step down at this time. I appreciate the opportunity to contribute to the board's work and the chance to collaborate with fellow members. I'm confident that the board will continue to thrive and make positive contributions to our community. Thank you for understanding, William J. Burns.
Great. We thank you. Uh, Bill, do you have anything to add? Bill Casparra with us. I saw his name. There he is. Yes, I see your hand raised. Bill, who is the Chair of our zoning board, go ahead, speak. You're on mute. Where'd he go? Bill, you're on mute. You keep bouncing around my screen. If you could unmute, which is in the lowest portion of your screen, if you're on a laptop or a computer.
You there? Can you hear me? One minute now.
We can hear you great.
Okay, um, yes, it's, um, Bill has been a wonderful member. He's always been well, well-informed and a great asset, and he'll be uh, truly missed, well-respected member, and it was, uh, kind of a shock to all of us that he resigned, so he'll be truly missed. Uh, but with that said, Mr. Chairman, we do have, um, an opening now for a full member as well as an alternate member. And I'd just like to ask the residents of the community if there are, is anyone out there that, uh, would like to volunteer, um, we, we do have an opening, and if you could put, uh, fill out an application of interest, certainly it's it's in a pointed position, as you know, by the, uh, the Board of Selectmen, and we'd welcome anyone that would like to volunteer their time and get involved. We do meet twice, uh, twice a month, the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month, and they they can, uh, fill out an application with with the, uh, Selectman's Office or with Rachel Benson in the Planning Office. And please feel free, it's it's a good way to be involved, it's an important board. And, um, we, we actually did have an application, and I'll be meeting with that individual tomorrow night, so please, it's a good way to get involved, it's an important board. Uh, we uphold the zoning board of, the zoning bylaws, and, uh, it's just a good way to be involved, so I encourage any member that would like to, uh, we welcome all, so with that said, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Casparra. And, uh, for the public out there, I know if you, if you're anxious about taking a position, I've known Mister Casparra for uh, a decade, decade and a half, well, over a decade and a half. And, uh, when he was over in Foxborough as a building commissioner, and he's a wealth of information. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get trained very quickly. Uh, so at this time, Chair and Entertain a motion with regrets to accept the resignation of William Burns from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so a motion made by Selectman Gallo, seconded by Selectman Rouse, I saw Jim's lips move, but he was muted. So I'll take, uh, Selectman Gallo and Select, uh, Board Member Rouse. Uh, so we have a motion, and a second, is there any further discussion? Being none, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
All right, so that was quick and easy, five zero. Uh, we'd like to thank Mister Burns for his time on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I remember when we appointed him, and I'm sure he's done a fine job. Uh, let's jump over real quick to Tab Seven. I see we have James Osnol. He's got to get up early tomorrow morning to get breakfast for the residents of Rantham. So you're applying for a one-day, uh, liquor license at eight fifty Franklin Street for April nineteenth, twenty twenty four. And so I'm just looking at the application, and it's for a birthday party, fiftieth. Geez, I'm glad they got a fiftieth birthday party. Uh, so this is going to be on the nineteenth from six to nine P M. We've been to this before. I have no questions for, for Mister Osnol. Jim, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one. So James, I see in the packet that, uh, that you're tip certified.
Yes, I am.
Are you rather serve is going to be tip certified?
Yes, I've got Jessica Savignon, who's tip certified as well, as well as my wife.
Okay. So you'll be the only three serving?
Yes, it's going to be about thirty-five people. It's only going to require one bartender.
No, okay, very good. I appreciate that, and good luck.
Thank you.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just one question, um. I've been to James's events, does a great job, uh, always well done. Is there, he hasn't reached the, uh, the, the maximum number of one-day, uh, licenses, has he?
No, I think this is maybe his first or second for twenty twenty four.
Oh, yeah, you know what? I apologize, it's only March, so James, I apologize, I don't think you've been doing that many parties. No further questions.
Okay, Select Board Member Harrington.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
No further questions, thank you.
All right. I did see you'll be hosting this summer, possibly the, uh, King Philip Class of Eighty-Nine reunion. Just a reminder, in the summer, we limit our meetings, so get that in early if it's going to happen. All right, at this time, the chair and entertainer motion to approve the one, or deny, I'll leave it up to you, the one-day liquor application for James's breakfast at eight fifty Franklin Street for April nineteenth, twenty twenty four, from six P M. To nine P M. Into authorize the use of electronic signatures.
So moved.
Motion made by Select Board Member Anderson, was there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, second was made by Select Board Member Harrington, is there any further discussion? Being none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Okay, that passed five zero. So at this time, we have with us, and I'm, I'm afraid I'm going to butcher the last name, Chris, is it Clutchman?
Yes, Chair Botash, it's Clutchman. You did, you did perfectly.
You did perfectly too. So we're going to jump over to Tab, uh, Eight, and Chris is from, uh, Governor Healy's office, correct?
I actually work for Secretary Augustus in the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Uh, and I am the Director of the Division of Livable Communities. Um, thank you so much for having me at your meeting. I'm here on behalf of Secretary Augustus, Governor Healy, and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll to listen to your concerns. Uh, in addition to, you know, looking at your, the letter that you sent to the governor, uh, and helping prepare responses to it. Um, I also oversee the MBTA Communities Program, uh, as well as many other activities, um, that are underneath my division. Um, and I'd like to just basically open the floor to you. If you have questions for me, I certainly can offer some clarifications, but first really, I'd like to hear from you.
Okay, we appreciate you being here, and, uh, when Kevin told me you were going to come visit, I was excited to, you know, uh, we're glad to see your response to the letters. You know, Rantham, I don't know if you've ever visited Rantham besides the outlets, that's a, we should give the outlets their own zip code, it's not like Rantham. Rantham is, you know, I think I've asked this question in one of our meetings to each one of the board members, why did you move to Rantham? I didn't ask Jim because he was born here, he had no choice. But, uh, you know, we all had this similar story, grew up in Rosendale, you know, Chris grew up in, uh, Easton, Michelle grew up on the Cape, Bill grew up in Dedham. And there was something that drew us all to Rantham. And, uh, it was, it it's special, and I know, uh, uh, State Rep Vaughn lives in Rantham, and he finds it special, and Senator Rouse has visited us on many occasions, uh, celebrating the tree lighting and things of that nature. And she's complimented on the warmth and charm in this, the community that we have. And, I, you know, I'm going to open up to everybody, I just want to give you a little, freshen my head, a little dissertation on, you know, wh- the way we feel, we, we, we put, I've been on the board now for fourteen years, and we've worked on three different occasions with MAPC, and they've been great. Uh, Ms. White and Mister Failure have been great to us, and listened to our residents. Uh, the most, uh, intensive, uh, participation they did was for the master plan, which our Select Board Member Chris Gallo sat in on that, did an outstanding job. The members from the community, the, the members of the community and the electric boards that served, uh, Josh did a great job, and I forget the, the other person who worked with them on it. It was just a great compilation, and it was the first time I read a master plan that I was like, this is the vision for Rantham. It encompasses everything. Uh, prior to that, I worked with, uh, Ms. White and Josh on the Village A, Village B zoning in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which, you know, if you've been in our center of town, especially in the last few months since the center school lot is done, and we're looking forward to seeing the, uh, Cook's Hall being done. It's just, it's, it it's, uh, I think the best way to describe it is our football coach, when we honored K P.'s football team for being the number one in the state, she said it's like being in a Hallmark movie, being in Rantham. And, uh, you know, so it, we know that, and we understand too that there are needs, there are housing needs. Uh, we put a lot of time and effort into creating a zoning district, Village B, that addresses, uh, things such as housing for our seniors. We have so many seniors living in in first-time buyer homes, as we would call them, you know, affordable homes that a first-time buyer could buy that are looking to get out, they can't afford the taxes, they can't afford the upkeep. So we also have a lot of people, uh, young people, you know, uh, for example, Bill's daughter moved to Rantham a couple of years ago, she was fortunate to get a home. You know, I have a daughter who'd love to move to Rantham with her kids, but there's no place. So we're trying to find that affordable component for first-time home buyers. And, you know, seniors, first-time home buyers, we have people who who want to move out of their parents' houses that are looking for an apartment, so we, we actually have a nice development that we like that addresses housing. And, you know, it's, it's not like we're saying no, it's just based on the master plan, based on the residents, because we're all about our legislated body, and they're the ones who have to say, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's sort of like, I, I, I think back and, I, I, I'm a history buff, and I, uh, and, uh, Ronald Reagan's farewell speech, "We, the people," and he says, you know, government is the vehicle and the people are the drivers. And that's the way I feel about me as a board member. I don't make decisions, it's the people. I listen, we help facilitate those decisions. And, uh, you know, I've heard from them, and they just would like to grow Rantham at a rate that keeps the charm. And also part of the reason why we have the charm, and it's probably, if we think back, it could be a negative, we don't have the infrastructure. We are private sewer, it's all septic and a few, uh, a few waste treatment plants. Our water structure has been taxed to the max. We have people living on streets that have water mains installed in nineteen fourteen with lead, four-inch water mains supplying the street. So, you know, we, we have so much infrastructure struggles that when we did our due diligence, we found a place where we can do a development that is not as dense, uh, suits the needs, it's welcoming not only for our other, our own residents, but you know, if you look at the census over the years, Rantham has welcomed so many new people to Rantham. I've been here thirty-four years and watched the town double. Do I regret it? Not at all, because the people that have come to Rantham have made it better. You know, I look at, you know, Chris has been in town for eight years maybe, and jumped in, got involved, he's a, he's, he's a mentor to kids by coaching. He's just, he's just a great asset to the community. Michelle's been here twenty-five years, Bill's been here, what, thirty years? And, and, and we look at Jim, who's been here all his life, who dedicated his life to the town and our police department, and still to this day mentors the youth with D E A R programs to keep them off of drugs, and it just, it's just, you know, I always say it, and people laugh at me, and, and Chris, you know what I'm going to say, Rantham's not a town, it's a family. And we welcome people to our family, but we want to do it in the right way that our infrastructure can support it. So, you know, I, I think I've said enough, and I'm going to turn it over to, uh, to one of our other Select Board members, but that's just the way I feel, and I think that would probably give you my picture. And, you know, like I said, we're not saying no, we're just saying, hey, you know, we've got something that we feel is right. Uh, we have no ties to the MBTA. We actually, uh, voted in public transportation probably about twelve years ago, and it left. And it's because one person rode the bus. And what ended up happening is he stopped going to the bus stop to pick up this gentleman and take him home, he'd go to his house because he was the only person riding it. It's just, we have no connectivity to it, and the people that do use public transportation, they have their ways, and they just, you know, I think when they did their, uh, their list of wants and desires when they moved to a town, MBTA wasn't one of them. So I just don't know the ties. Select Board Member Anderson, I said enough.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, I thought that was well stated, so I, I thank you on that. Uh, Chris, first of all, I want to, want to thank you for, uh, coming for the board, so we can have a, uh, you know, productive discussion. Uh, so, so my biggest concern is, I've been here my entire life. I spent many years in municipal government, and the thing that always drove me crazy was the fact that the state continuously mandates, um, well, I should say unfunded mandates, and, you know, they, they put a lot of the, the, you know, the cost factor on each individual community. And if we were to build, uh, what is desired through the, um, the legislation, you know, my concern is like, like Selectman, uh, Botash had mentioned, you know, the infrastructure for water and for, for sewage, number one. I know that, um, you know, I'm sure the developers would be required to, to pick up the, the bulk of that. But what about with, if anything gets developed as is, and we've got additional three or four hundred schoolchildren, like, who's paying for the, for the additional, you know, whether it's a addition to the school or a new school? And with that, you're going to hire additional teachers, who's paying for that? Also, you know, if you end up with, you know, five hundred units, you know, I think the state estimates three, three people per unit, that's fifteen hundred people. Um, you know, now you've got to increase public safety. And so, not that I'm opposed to, you know, thoughtful and responsible housing. Um, my concern is we're going to tax out our seniors in our community, and also our first-time home buyers will be able to afford to buy in. So if you could address that, I, I'd appreciate that.
All right, are you going to recap all the responses in the back, or do you want to do them one-on-one?
I, I think maybe I'd like to hear from all of them, and I'm, I'm taking some notes, and I'll, and I'll try and address them. And how's that sound? If I hear from everybody first, Chair, I'd leave it to your discretion.
That sounds great. Select Board Member Gallo.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chris, for being on our meeting this evening. Um, I, I mean, I, I don't want to, you know, add to what's already been said, a lot of the good points, main points have already been mentioned. Um, but my biggest thing that hasn't been But my biggest thing that hasn't been, Jimmy Selectman Anderson alluded to it is, whenever, whenever we do projects in town, we do a fiscal analysis to see the impacts. No one's done a fiscal analysis for us to show us tax revenue versus expense. And to Selectman Anderson's points, we understand that the developer would foot the bill for the development costs, the package plant, all those things. But no one's looking at the other expense, the ancillary costs, the cost to the schools, the cost of teachers, the cost of FDPD, DPW, you know, the added traffic, the traffic studies. That's what's very concerning to me. The other thing that's very concerning is when you allow zoning by right and you completely go around our planning board, we lose any and all control of the development as the resident voters. And that's why we have a home rule charter, that's why we have a planning board, that's why we have a select board, so that we have a say in our destiny. You know, and, and to what the developments will look like. Further, I, I keep hearing people make miss comments about the fact that we need more affordable housing. And we do, but they, they think that this development is going to bring that. And it, it actually has no senior component, no age restriction, and it has no affordability component. So just to say that if you add 500 units, or whatever it is, that's going to drive down the, the, the price of apartments. That's ridiculous. I'm in real estate. People would just come from other areas that can afford $3,000 or $4,000 a month apartments. And you're further driving out the very people that we say we're trying to help, the Rentham residents. The first time renters or home buyers or the seniors looking to downsize. So there's just a lot of issues that I have with this unfunded mandate. You know, and, and those are the, I, I'll just leave it there for now, because again, I think a lot of them have already been mentioned. But I really appreciate you being here. There's another misconception that we don't want to work with the state. That's completely ridiculous. We do want to work with the state, we do want to comply, but we want to say in our destiny. And all we've heard, Chris, thus far is not that, hey, Rentham, we want to work with you and we want to, you know, there's some give and take here and we want your opinion. All we've heard is threats that if you don't comply, we're going to take this away, we're going to take that away. And that's not productive, and our residents won't tolerate that, and nor will this board. So with that, with all due respect, and with that, I digress. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Select Board Member Harrington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again, Chris. Like the other board members have mentioned, we appreciate you coming out, spending your time, and listening to our concerns. I, I, I don't have a lot to add that hasn't been said already. The, the town of Rentham is, is a wonderful place. We are very accepting. We're more than willing to do what we need to do to make changes, to make more people welcome. But prior to making any of those decisions, we need to know the impact on our community, on our schools, on our services, on our water, on our, we, well, that's right, I forgot, we don't have sewer. We also have many neighborhoods in West Rentham that have poor water quality, low water, and no fire, no, no migrants. So, maybe when the state comes in and they want to add, you know, quarter of a billion or a billion dollars to our infrastructure and help us out, then we could open you welcomely. That's all I have. Thank you.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, welcome, and thank you for taking the time to speak with us to hear our concerns. I think it's been eloquently said between Chair Botash, Vice Chair Gallo, Select Board Member Anderson, and Select Board Harrington, our concerns. I don't want to reiterate them. They are obviously concerns of all of us. I think for, for me, I just want to reemphasize that the state thinking that this law fits all is just unfair. It doesn't fit all. Every town in this Commonwealth is unique and different. And as Select Board Member Gallo has said, home rule, we should be able to, the residents should be able to make decisions about our growth within our town and to be able to manage that to our ability. So I'd just like to reemphasize that and say that, that it's, it's just an unfairness to us to try to incorporate this with our current structure without any funding to assist. Thank you.
And, and before we turn over, there was one thing that's been asked by Senator Roush, and I know it's probably been asked, is in our letter, it states that we increase our population by about 13% and where that name, number came from. Based on the assessment of 15 units per acre and the requirements at 750 residents, the average, the national average is 2.4 residents per household. Massachusetts is 2.5. But what I did was, I did the math and I just went with two. Assuming it would just be two people, whether it's a single parent and a child, or a, a couple, or, you know, whatever the scenario may be. Based on the 2020 census, Rentham's population is 12,197 people. So when you do the math, that's where the 13% came from. So if you're, you know, I know Senator Roush and her letter back to us, want to know where that number came from, and I just wanted to say, because I'm, I'm a numbers guy, everything I do is numbers, so that's where that came from. And, and, you know, there's potential of being three per, which would increase that number. So it's, you know, our, I think our master plan has us maxing out pretty soon than where we are right now. We're getting close to the maximum was allowed. Schools were built. A high school was just, we're making our last payment, and I think next year, Kevin, correct, on the high school?
NFI 26, so yeah.
You know, planning was done. We, we've used all the, you know, we've done everything. And then it's sort of like, this is just a, a, it's a big impact, and it's, it's infrastructure, it's, if, if, you know, it's, we should change the name to Chair, because everybody knows everybody's name in town. The police officers know, the youth, the youth look up to the police. It's just a great, you've got to spend a day out here, and then you'll be sitting there and you'll be on our side. No, I'm kidding. I'm going to turn it over to you now, Chris.
Well, thanks so much. I have to say, I have not been able to be to downtown Rentham, but I have spent some time looking at the master plan that you guys have, looking at the materials that your staff and the consultants that were funded by our agency or by Mass Housing Partnership, the work that they've done over the last year, as, as well as just trying to get to know your town. And so I, I have been studying it from afar. I also live in a small town that does not have water and sewer, and so I'm pretty familiar with, you know, the, the feeling and, and how important that feeling is to you, that small town feeling. I do want to make some clarifications, and again, if you have questions about what I'm clarifying, I'm happy to talk about it. So first of all, the law that was passed by the legislature, signed by Governor Baker, which is my job to implement, does apply to 177 municipalities. They're, you know, they're very different. Cambridge is very different from Rentham. Rowley is different from Quincy. Harvard is different from Hull. I mean, they're all different. And so we had to come up with a framework as a way to kind of help us understand and categorize communities. I appreciate that that might feel a little bit like one size fits all. There are actually four different kinds of community categories. And you guys are in that adjacent category, which means you're next to a, a community that has a fixed transit station, even though you don't have a transit station yourself. And so we did that to try and help us grapple with the fact that we have so many different communities. In addition to overseeing the MBTA Communities Program, I also oversee capital grant programs of about $50 million a year, including Governor Healy's new Housing Works Infrastructure Program, H-WIP. It's, you may have heard of Mass Works in the past. This is a sister program to Mass Works that the governor has identified because she wants a really specific infrastructure fund just to support new, you know, additional sewer lines, additional water lines, additional intersection development, all of that to help communities address needs that come with housing. So that's just a little bit about the infrastructure. Just to clarify, the zoning though, which is what the law asks you to do, is to do zoning of a small portion of your, of your town, you know, very small percentage of land at 15 units an acre by right. So I've been doing planning and zoning for a long, long time, not only in Massachusetts, but in other parts of the country, with towns significantly smaller than Rentham. Like I, I worked in a town of 600 people. So I do, I really, I just want you to understand that. I understand the debates that you guys have. But zoning is step one in the process, and I understand and looking at the progress that you guys have made with your Village A and your Village B, that you understand as well, when you zone something, it doesn't happen automatically. In fact, it takes a lot of work. You have to, you know, present it to developers and encourage them to come and develop under the zoning. So zoning takes a lot of willing partners. It takes a property owner that wants to develop. It takes a developer that wants to develop. It takes a, a bank that wants to fund development. And then it, you know, and then it takes a construction loan to build that. Right now, my understanding from the development community is that a project, especially a multifamily project, would take anywhere, even, even relatively small projects would take anywhere from five to seven years from approval of a project to, to construction. So I just want to emphasize that when you put zoning in place, it does not mean that you have an instant or immediate population growth. In fact, that population growth will happen over time, and that this law is meant to help communities plan for the long term. Okay, zoning can be in place for many years. The market may not be there for Rentham, but it may eventually be there over time. The town, as you guys, I think, understand, you won't be required to build infrastructure to support these projects that is done by developers. And let me talk about that for a little bit. Let's talk about how you, when developers build without septic, and, and let's say they also have to have a well, so you don't have any additional water capacity. So let's say there's a two acre site and somebody wants to build at 15 units an acre. And so you think, oh, wow, that might be 30 units. Well, in fact, if they have to build a leach field and a septic system and a well and separate those on the property, you're more likely to get about half of that density. And so you wouldn't ever get the full density unless there is sewer and water that is available. And we understand this, and, but we still, you know, the requirement is to zone at a certain level. But understanding that in small towns without infrastructure, you're very likely to get much lower density. However, that still may be a cluster of 15 townhouses, you know, on one acre, and then, you know, the leach field and the well on another acre. So that's not the biggest impact. It's not as much production as you might get if you were fully sewed and watered. Let's see. Again, I said I've read your comprehensive plan that you just finished a couple, like, two years ago. And you have some amazing policies about housing. And so I was really happy to see that clearly you're, you've been thinking about this, including desire to put, you know, multifamily housing in where you have existing infrastructure in your downtown. And I know by looking at your staff's presentation that that's some of the areas that you have been considering about where you might upzone for properties. I also do understand that the outlets were built, and that, you know, there's a hotel across the way, there's apartments across the way, there's assisted living, office buildings, and those all are examples of development that have occurred with a development actually handling the infrastructure and, and, and has happened in, in your communities. So those are just some basic clarifications. Your, so let me, let me, now I'm going to start trying to answer your, some of the responses. So you say no ties to the MBTA, and, and this is a confusion that people have. It's like, I don't have MBTA bus service or train service in my town. Why are we even part of this? So the statute, again, that the legislature passed, cross references a statute that is the MBTA's service district. And so you are in the MBTA's service district, and that's articulated in Chapter 161A, Section 1. And so we can't change that. It's just a pure cross reference. And so you guys are part of the process because you're in the MBTA service district. I understand you may not get service from them, but you are in their service district. Let's see. Talk a little bit about schoolchildren. I've talked a little bit about how zoning is for the long term and that you would most like, you know, very, very unlikely to see immediate population increase and immediate construction of new housing under this. Again, it is our hope that new housing is built, but it will happen over time. And so I did take a look at some of your school enrollment, and I understand that, you know, over the last 30 years, you've seen a decline in enrollment, although recently you've seen an increase. And I would just reflect that this is true not only across Massachusetts, but across the country. There is just a demographic trend that the next generation of folks that are having kids are having fewer kids, and there just is a decline in school enrollment. And in fact, over, in the country and in Massachusetts, I believe the average decline is about a six, sorry, a 72% decline in school enrollment. So there, you know, your schools are going to decline possibly, you know, over time. And so one of the things, when you think about adding new residents that multifamily housing could bring, is that they're going to fill in, instead of you not having to hire new teachers, but you won't having to be closing schools or consolidating your school system, which is a difficult, it's a difficult thing for a community to face. So again, I don't, I don't want to underestimate that. New, new school enrollment does bring new growth in your chapter 70 funds from the state. I heard loud and clear from Vice Chair Gallo about the fiscal analysis and wanting to understand the benefits. And that's a very good practice that you guys should have. And I think, again, I'm trying to address that, you know, schools won't necessarily be a one-time impact. It would be slow. Most fiscal analysis that looks at multifamily housing is, is revenue positive for communities. And so if you, if you want me to follow up with your town manager and send you some of those studies, I can do that. But there, there are definitely studies out there that show that, that, that new development is revenue positive for communities. More excise tax, more personal property tax, more real estate tax. Zoning by right is something I heard Vice Chair Gallo say, and I just want to be clear that when something is zoned as of right, it does not mean that somebody can just come and pull a building permit without planning board review. In fact, we've produced sample bylaws that are available on our website that have a site plan review process that anticipates that a planning board would have a site plan review and would be able to review for very important things, such as, is the, you know, if it's a larger project, you know, is, are the driveways safe? Is the circulation safe? Do they need a traffic light, you know, as they access another road? Are the, you know, the trash area screened? You know, there's all sorts of things that can be covered in site plan review that is considered a non-discretionary review, and it can be by the planning board. So I just want to clarify that as of right, zoning does not mean that somebody just comes and builds a building permit, pulls a building permit, and you don't have any say in it, and your planning board can have a say. What the planning board could not do is say multifamily is not appropriate in this area because you've zoned it for multifamily. So that is the difference between a special permit, which is called a discretionary permit, and a site plan review. But you definitely can have site plan review so that you do not lose control. Again, I was a municipal planner for seven years here in Massachusetts, and I'm, I think site plan review is a great tool. And I would encourage you in your, as you explore this, that you think about site plan review to allow for that control by the planning board. I think you also, Vice Chair Gallo, mentioned affordable housing. So the statute does not call for affordable housing, but you can require a certain level of affordability. If you want to have 10% of the units affordable at 80% of the area median income, you can do that. That will hold you harmless for any increases in units against your subsidized housing inventory. So that is one thing you can do. You could even do deeper affordability, although we do have some controls over that, and you have to, if you do, like, if you wanted to have 15% of the units affordable at 80%, we would have to review that to make sure development's still feasible, but that is possible. And, you know, there are communities that are doing deeper affordability than the 10 at 80 that is allowed just to happen without any, any other review. Again, I've tried to address Select Board Rouse, your concerns about one size fits all. I do understand that it may feel like that to you. I have 177 MBTA communities. I'm very aware that they're all different. And what we're asking is you to take a small area of your community and show us how you can zone for 750 units. And I think, again, your staff has, has gone through that exercise. We're happy to continue to consult with your staff and the consultants, or you. Frankly, I was disappointed that this was a virtual meeting, because I was looking forward to coming to Rentham Center and having dinner in one of your restaurants and seeing your town, because I understand how important it is for you to, to, to bring forward that, the idea of community. And I want to say that adding a small amount of multifamily zoning should not change the character of your community. Just as adding, you know, the, the outlets maybe did not change the character of your community. It is a benefit to your community, I hope, for tax revenue purposes. But I, I think that the small amount of multifamily housing can be done in a way that will not disrupt the wonderful character of your town. So I'm going to stop after a long, long-winded, and I'm happy to engage on any one of those topics. So I'm gonna stop after a long, long-winded, and I'm happy to engage on any one of those topics.
I, I took some notes. You know, the five to seven year development, you're right. I'm in, I'm in commercial construction. I see what it takes. We watched out, Ledview took thirty-six months to come to fruition from the time they came in front of the first board and and opened their first doors. I do see that. For me, I, I came to Rantham. We, we bought a house. We'd live in it for, we said, I said, we're just newly married. We'll live here for two to three years. And would find something bigger. The end of April will be celebrating thirty-four years in this house. Time flies. It goes by quick. So to, you know, five to seven years, it will be built. It's our job to plan for the future. Five to seven, it's not like, okay, it's not gonna affect, you know, we got three-year terms. We could be out by then. No, we're gonna be here. You know, as far as I'm, I'm here for the long haul. Chris and Jim are up for reelection. They're up for the long haul. Bill and I are next year, and Michelle's this her first year. We're in for the long haul. We're looking out for the longevity. So what is gonna be the impact in seven years? The decline in students, you're right, because because of, and Michelle, I think, at the time was on the school committee. We had a large group of residents take their children out of public schools and put them in private. And the main reason why is the classrooms are overcrowded. The, the, the baby boom of April, the first snowstorm of nineteen ninety-seven, we had classrooms that were crazy. And a lot of people brought them out. Now the economy's turning. They're bringing them back in. A way that I also see there's a decline is because we don't have those first-time homes for these people. Seniors are living in them, occupying them. And and if we gave them a place to live, those homes would open up for young families to come and would help increase the student base in our schools. Our education system, as far as I'm concerned, is phenomenal. Now, am I setting the the level low? I went to, I went to Boston Public Schools during Boston. You know, so, you know, I, I saw the struggles. I saw the classrooms of thirty students in a class, thirty-two students in a class in high school. And the, and the lack of education because of the classrooms are too big. We had class of twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, wrecked students in our high school. It was blowing out of the seams. That could happen again. So, you know, it's, we've seen the hopeful gamut, like I said, Michelle can speak to, were you on the school committee back in twenty, would have been for you twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, when the schools were maxed out? And, you know, the, the quality of education, and I, I actually participate and go to the school committee meetings because I'm amazed at the quality of education that you can give when you don't have thirty-two students packed in a classroom and you have a reasonable manageable class size and also provide the services, not only services of reading, writing, arithmetic, but, you know, we hope everyone has a happy home life, but some people don't, and they come to school for a little bit of, you know, to get, get a little bit of support and and it's there. And the last thing for the affordability, we are very cognizant of our requirements for forty B. We like to be above the minimum. We like to make sure that we have an opportunity for the people who live in Rantham, who, you know, for teachers and for first responders who want to come, who qualify for a lot of these forty B type of housing. We, we have that, but I think the affordability we're talking about is those first-time buyer homes, which in the homes for seniors that are affordable, and this component doesn't have it.
Well, you, again, you could add an affordable, you know, you could add inclusionary zoning. That's, that's allowed. So it's your choice. You, you, you have the choice.
Age restricted would be allowed in this?
So your zoning cannot require age restriction, but that doesn't mean that a developer can't come and build a senior housing project. You just cannot require that it be senior housing. And I do want to say that for school enrollment, there are, there's a very recent study done by MAPC that confirms, they, they did a study, I think, in twenty seventeen, and they've just updated it, that multifamily housing really does not contribute to school enrollment. And so I'm happy to share that with town manager, your town manager. But MAC, MAPC just updated that for your region.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Select Board Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Chris, listen, I, I appreciate your, your efforts, and I, I know you've got, you know, paid a good light with the MBTA housing legislation. But I do respectfully disagree on a couple of your comments. One, you said that, you know, this legislation would allow housing to be built so that we wouldn't have schools that would close. And I can tell you, I've been here my entire life, and we've never had a school in this town close. In fact, if anything, we've, we'd either had to put on additions, several of them, in fact, or build new schools. So I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't use that lightly, but that's just the, that's, that's the fact. You know, when you said that development would be, you know, revenue positive, you know, through real estate tax and excise tax, you know, I, I would disagree with that as well, because those taxes would not offset the cost for new construction for, for schools, hiring additional staff, hiring public safety. And I can tell you another fact, in all my years here, taxes have never gone down. So it's not, it's not even a positive revenue. It's not even positive neutral. So I would disagree with that. And when you said that, you, you know, you would say the mall has not changed the character of our town. I can guarantee you it has. Okay, between the traffic and the crime that's increased, it has changed the, the role character of the nice town around them. So I respectfully disagree, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I really, I'm, I'm, and again, I really, I want to have a frank and honest conversation, so I appreciate that, that we may disagree.
Now that you want to have a frank conversation, we're gonna put you over to Frank Gallo.
It's just a joke they.
It's a, it's a joke. WGB quoted him as Frank Gallo, in the media.
Misquoted my name, Chris, but I, I go by whatever you want to call me. I, too, appreciate a frank discussion, and I'm okay if we disagree. I do have to further disagree with you though on the fact that you're telling me that the planning board has a real say at these developments. I've asked the questions. I've done my research. The most that they can approve is small things, colors, lighting, parking lot. We have a, we have a, we have a, a development right now that we're trying to get approved that calls for eight units an acre. And even at eight units an acre, our townspeople were concerned that that was too dense. So to go to fifteen units an acre and not have our planning board to be able to have a say in to reduce the density is a huge issue. And we're giving up a ton of control. So I mean, with all due respect, you, no one's been able to show me that the planning board wouldn't lose ninety-five percent or more of its authority with this buy-ride zoning. So I, I definitely respectfully have to disagree with you on that point.
You all set, Frank?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Chris, you know, I, I really appreciate you coming out. I'm sure you have an extremely difficult job because I doubt there's a whole bunch of people that are just welcoming this mandate that's being jammed down their throats. So again, I appreciate your efforts in trying to soothe the communities in the area to, to make it seem less of a mandate and less stressful than it is. But quite honestly, it's, it, it is gonna have big impact. And the way the state is going about it and not only threatening, but telling you that you're going to lose, you know, various monies, just makes it even more difficult to accept such big changes that we aren't opposed to what we want to work with to make it work better for both us and the state.
Yeah. I, I think, just to summarize, you know, what, what we've, what, what my program asks folks to do is to do the work that your staff has done to some extent, to take that to your voters at a town meeting. It doesn't have to be spring town meeting, but, you know, take it to them, ask them to, that is what we are asking. We are asking that you try. We are asking that you think about it and try. And then, you know, we submit what you've, you know, if, if it passes at your town meeting, it does need just a simple majority. For the most part, again, you should talk to your town council, but, you know, for the most part, we're talking about a simple majority. And if you are able to get something to be passed, then, you know, submit it to us for compliance. But I would say that that really what we're asking is for you to do the work, which, again, your staff has done an admirable job. And I think you've got about forty thousand dollars worth of consulting assistance to help her do that. And and then take it to your voters. I can't predetermine what your voters will say. And certainly without, you know, without leadership saying that, you know, you think this is really important for the town, it, it may not, it may not work. But that's what I would ask, is that you take it to the voters and, you know, go through the process. Finish the process that your staff has initiated.
Well, I, I think you'll find from the five of us is everything we do goes to the people.
That's right.
We, you know, even when we, we hire a town administrator, we reach out to residents to sit in and create a search committee. We don't use the agencies. We don't use, you know, all these different things. Matter of fact, Michelle, before she was on the board, sat on the search committee for our town administrator, town manager Kevin Sweet. We, we really empower the residents of Rantham to make decisions. And we will bring something to the, to the town meeting and let the legislative body make that decision. We do not make any decisions for anybody. We, we try to get them every bit of information they need to make the best decision for a quality of life that they expect. So we will be taking something to town meeting. What it is, we don't know yet. Because Rachel did do a great job. She worked with the Boulder Engineering and came up with some proposals. But we want to make sure no stone is unturned, that everything is looked at. So when I can, we have to, if it does come to it and we have to support something, we've done all of our due diligence. At this time, I don't feel comfortable. I don't want to speak for the other board members. But we have to, and if we do fucking something we could all agree upon, it will definitely be. But if not, yeah, we have to let the legislative body make a decision. But we want to make sure whatever's presented at the town meeting is the best, this best that we could provide for them.
I, that's, that's fantastic to hear. What I would say is, you know, as you, you know, I know you have your, 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 your spring town meeting coming up pretty fast, and you've got that to think about in your budget, and all, all of that's very important. But as you continue to work over the summer, I want to just let you know about a couple of options. We have an optional pre-adoption process where if you want to have something looked at by our team prior to going to your fall town meeting, then we will look at your package, whether it's the zoning, you know, the district location, all of the many factors that Rachel has been working on and your team has been working on. And so we can do that pre-adoption review so that, you know, and and give you some helpful hints about whether, you know, something needs to be tweaked or whatever. And we're happy to, and that is the kind of working with you that we can do over the summer. Again, it does take us about, I shouldn't even say over the summer. It takes us almost three months to review those. And so we are meeting that target to review because we have many communities. I think we're almost, we're starting to be upwards towards fifty communities that have submitted for pre-adoption, and we've given feedback to about eighteen or nineteen of those. And so we're working really hard. These are mostly communities that are having spring town meetings, and so we're very busy working with those communities because they're at the last hour. So we'd be happy to look at a pre-adoption, or if Rachel and your consultants and, you know, whether it's one of you or the, a planning board member wants to meet with our team, we will have, we can have a teams meeting to do that. And so we do want to kind of work with you as you're continuing to develop something that you want to bring. And again, like I said, you know, what we are gonna do is ask you to bring something to your town meeting and try and give you some hints about how, how to do that in the best way.
Select Board Member Rose, I don't want to forget you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, thank you for some of the clarification that you provided, and I just want to piggyback on what Chair Botash has stated. We are gonna be bringing this to our residents to make a decision, but our goal is to find truth in what is being stated and making sure that the right information is being presented to them. And quite honestly, this evening, in your answering some of our questions, you stated there are many unknowns. Quite honestly, you can't predict when a developer will come in and want to develop. It can be seen as a developer's happy dessert time. There are plenty of zoning that they can use and develop on. So there's so many unknowns that you stated. And I also feel like there's a lot of threatening language that's being shared in discussing the MBTA law, even the school closure. As Select Board Anderson has stated, we've never had that issue. It's never been seen here. People flock to rent them for their education. So saying those kind of things, we want to see where the truth lies with what is being presented, what we are allowed to do, what is our planning board allowed to approve. So our residents are completely informed and know all aspects of this law and how it will change Rantham for not just the five to seven years, but the generations to come. We're not looking on this on the short term. We're looking at it on the long term. The, the developers, I understand what you're saying, would be responsible for some of the infrastructure. But again, to reemphasize with Select Board, Anderson has stated, those taxes that you're claiming that multi-houses will bring in will certainly not cover the expenses for the schools, for the roads, for the traffic, for the police, for the fire. Let us not lose sight of those services that will be unfunded. And finally, I just would love your opinion to understand, does the state and the officers and the administration strongly believe that with Massachusetts being the second most expensive state to live in, due to, due to their taxes, do they honestly believe that there are that many individuals that will be filling these units that are being required by the hundred and seventy-seven towns in this Commonwealth?
I can only really speak for myself here, and so I just want to be clear that this is, you know, my opinion as a planner with thirty-five years of experience, that the lack of housing supply in Massachusetts is directly linked to the high costs of housing in Massachusetts. Local communities have control of zoning and have been, have limited the amount of developable land for housing. I'm not saying that Rantham did it, you know, I'm just saying, you know, in general, there is not enough land zone for housing at certain densities, and so that has contributed to the housing crisis that we have. I, I do believe that. I've been working on this for about six years, starting with trying to get the simple majority zoning passed and in legislature. And I've been working with communities to offer carrot-based approach. So under Governor Baker, the Housing Choice Initiative offered carrots to communities who were producing housing at, at certain rates. And so that program was a carrot-based approach. It did not solve the housing crisis in Massachusetts. What we have is not, it's not necessarily such a huge population demand. What we have are more households. You have people, you're, you've mentioned a couple of times, you know, your children are looking to move into Rantham. Well, those are, you know, you were one household, and now you, if you have adult children, you have, and you have more than one child, you have multiple households. So there have, and or families who go through divorce, where you want to stay in one community and one family, one household becomes two households, for example. So those are, we have a household demand problem that needs to be solved. And so I, I do strongly believe that the lack of supply has contributed to the, the housing crisis and the extremely high housing prices in Massachusetts.
I think that lack of supply, with no disrespect, is seen in multiple states, and I think there's been a huge flux of individuals leaving the state of Massachusetts due to the high expense and just living here, beyond the housing, what's available for housing. So I think it's just beyond housing. It's other aspects as well, with all due respect.
I could just say something, Mr. Chair, through you. Being in the real estate business, I talk to developers all the time that just don't want to develop here right now. They don't want to develop housing because it's too difficult. The, the state is not easy to deal with. It's too bureaucratic. There's too much red tape. You know, there's no, there's not a lot of cranes in Boston right now building multifamily housing. And there's a reason for it. You know, a lot of developers I talked to have said that it's gotten too expensive to do business here. So I would, I would, I would actually say that less government intervention and free markets would actually increase housing stock. And the other thing that I would say, too, is, you know, Chris, the other thing that residents are asking us, and this is obviously part of the thing that we have to bring them the full package. So I have residents every day that say to me, is this even constitutional, this mandate? No one's talking about the fact, well, a few people are, but not this, the, everyone's talking about you have to comply. You have to comply. If you don't, this, that, and the other thing's gonna happen. But what does the state constitution say? You know, it's, it's an interesting concept where, where we have a home rule charter and that we are, you know, we're governed by our charter. And the fact that we're, you know, being mandated to do this zoning, we all know it's gonna get built. Developers don't just zone and let the land sit there. They find a way to develop it. So people are asking us, is this constitutional? Can the state literally force our hand and make us zone this? And then what's to say that once we zone it, the state's not gonna come back and say, well, now that it's zoned, you need to figure out a way to develop it. And if you don't develop it in the next two to four years, we're gonna threaten to take more grants in chapter seventy and chapter ninety, you know, so there's a, there's a group of people out there that are nervous that, where does it end? Where does the state intervention end, Chris? And that's just, you know, me bringing you the concerns of our residents, which we will, in addition to bringing zoning to town meeting, we're, you know, part of our job is going to say, hey, this is what we feel like the constitutionality of this zoning looks like as well.
Well, certainly you can talk to your town council about that. We are in litigation with the town of Milton, and that is probably going to be a subject of that litigation. So I I'm not an attorney, so I I'm not going to try and address, you know, the constitutionality or not. What I can say is Chapter 40A is the zoning statute, and it is the zoning act in Massachusetts. And it does set a bunch of parameters that all 350 cities and towns in Massachusetts have to follow. How many, how much public notice do you give for a hearing? What kind of hearings can you have? What kind of things can be covered by special permits? What are exempt through the Dover Amendment in Section 3? You know, the zoning act sets forth a wide range of things that communities have to follow and and cannot not follow them. So I just would, I would, I would just offer that as saying like, there is a zoning act. It sets a framework for zoning. And the reason that the state, that the communities have, you know, planning boards is because of Chapter 40A. So I would just offer that as, you know, to me, that is the basic framework of of land use and zoning in Massachusetts. And it comes from the the general laws that have been established by the legislature. So I I won't go any further into, you know, the constitutionality. That's, that's a different question. But I would just point out that there are rules that you do follow now.
Right, with local oversight, though.
Well, you you know, I think the constitution has empowered the residents of towns to, you know, to be the the leaders and to, you know, to plan their destiny. And now, you know, we need to look at this and see how it fits. And it's, don't get me wrong, no one's here to attack anybody. I think you see what you, I think what you'll find from this board is passion.
I I feel it and I hear it, and I told, it's fine to disagree. And I certainly don't mean to make, you know, any broad statements about what's going to happen in your town. I'm just reflecting, you know, when I talk about school enrollment going down, that's a general trend. I'm not trying to say that it's going to happen in Rantham. And so please don't, don't take it to be that I think, you know, X, Y, Z is going to happen in your community, just trying to reflect some of the general, general trends that are happening across Massachusetts. And again, I'm very happy to have this conversation. I'm happy to come back. We will be working on a written response to your letter to Governor Healy, you know, from the secretary. And so we wanted to have, I wanted to come and sit with you guys before that letter is finalized so that we could continue to reflect, you know, this conversation. And I would say this is one conversation. We can have other conversations if you'd like. We can continue working with your staff. I will send the MABC school enrollment report, just because I've I've offered it. And if there's anything else that me or my team, because there's kind of a team of people behind me, it's not just me that are that are working on this. If there's anything else that we can do to help you or to try and clarify, we will do that. We are continuing to have, so we, I was participating in a webinar last week. Yeah, it was last week. This is Tuesday. And that was recorded. It was sponsored by MMA and MMLA, which is the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association and the Mass Municipal Association. The recording of that webinar is on their website, along with the deck that myself and the attorney from the Attorney General's Office Municipal Law Unit, those are the folks, when you do change zoning, they have to approve your zoning. So she's very familiar with zoning for for towns all across the Commonwealth and a private attorney who's working on, who's a town council to many communities. We're going to repeat that session on April 3rd. So first of all, you can go to the MMA website and watch that for, and and we're trying to share some lessons learned from communities that have already asked for pre-adoption reviews or have asked for reviews. So that's a resource for you. We're going to repeat that on April 3rd. And I believe we may even start to have more frequent webinars because we're having a lot of questions from communities, communities who want to have questions answered, you know, in a webinar. So I think I would just say, especially to Kevin, please look out for announcements of those. And if you or your staff want to participate, there were certainly select board members who were participating in that MMA webinar last week. And we'll continue to try and answer questions that communities are are having and to keep the dialogue open.
We appreciate that. I think, I think Select Board Member Anderson may have attended that last week, correct?
I did, I did, Mr. Chair.
So, you know, it's, you, you, you have to realize, you know, steps we've taken is we pumped the brakes. This was going to go on our, our Springtown meeting. Breaks. Yeah, we, we've, we're looking at every avenue. You know, we, we see what's happening in other communities. We see, you know, how things are being handled. I think we're taking a little different approach. You know, we, we're just making sure we provide the best package for the people. And like I said, you could see the passion in everybody here. We, you know, we're not, I, I remember one Select Board member saying, I'm not going the day of graduation because I don't want grape jelly on my shirt. You'll find all of us at the elementary school, at the middle school, at the high school, at the senior center, at the American Legion. We are with our residents, full force. You know, I, I haven't gone down to the ball fields, but if you go down there, you'll see Chris Gallo down at the ball fields constantly. You know, it's, it's really, we're involved with the community. We hear a lot. And I love the board I work with because of that. You know, they govern with their head, but know how to govern with their heart at times. And I think this is one of those instances where they're taking their heart into consideration because the people are coming to us. And it's hard to explain. If we don't have all the facts, it's very hard to explain. But we're not going to take any more of your time. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. Kevin, do you have anything to say? And I want to, Kevin, I want to thank you for bringing Chris to us. And 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 Rachel, I I appreciate what you've done and brought forward to us. And, you know, it's, I'm going to quote a priest from St. Mary's that we had years ago. It's great to celebrate your differences, but you got to put your, your head into the wind and and finish your journey. And that's what we're doing. Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, nothing further to add. I think there's obviously with some great dialogue and discussions. Thank you, Chris, for joining us. You know, Chris and I have had phone call conversations, and I appreciate your willingness to to join us this evening. And, you know, it's good seeing you and knowing Chris for the 20 years in local government and different local government capacity. So it's, it's good to see. It's been a while. But again, I do appreciate your time. We have been very active. As you can see, this board has really taken a step to educate themselves. There's been a lot of discussion. There's been a lot of independent research, including, you know, everything that comes through. You mentioned the MMA. I know myself, I was on that. I think Selectman Anderson, maybe Selectman Rose, I think was as well. So there's, you know, to sit, to say that, you know, we're limiting this to twice a month of research would be a drastic understatement. There's a considerable amount of work that this board is doing independently on their own and, you know, through, through town resources. So, you know, I just want to highlight that, particularly those, you know, they, they certainly are looking out for, you know, the residents of this community doing their due diligence, and I, and I commend them for that. But, you know, as they said, I think, you know, my goal and through my capacity as a town manager and to provide, you know, professional advice, you know, as I do believe we'll get to a place where we can bring this before our legislative body as the law requires and, you know, see, let the legislative body make the decision ultimately. But certainly, when we get to that point, there will not be any lack of research in what we feel at the, at that time is the best interest of, you know, the town of Rantham and its residents. So again, thank you for joining us. If there's any follow-up, I'm happy to be that conduit and communicate with you and and Rachel Benson, our Director of Planning, and keep everybody kind of informed and up to date. So thanks again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Rachel. I saw you come to a vision and then you disappeared.
I have nothing. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, we thank you. And hopefully next time you come out, we'll, it'll be in a live event. And we could, you could try one of our restaurants. And Jim is our restaurant connoisseur for the town of Rantham. So he would be the person.
That's wonderful. I look forward to it. And again, thanks for the opportunity. I really appreciate the amount of time you spent on your agenda. I know you have many other things to get to. And I appreciate the, the time to chat with you. And Kevin knows how to find me. So if you do have any other follow-up questions that you'd like, please let me know. And again, you, there will be a response letter coming. There's a little process when you write to the governor. There's a little process, but it it should be coming relatively soon.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to, we're going to take a quick two-minute, I mean, a one-minute recess, and we'll be right back. I will just wait for Bill. We'll get started. Will the board, do we want to go into the correspondence or we want to just go down to the next tab, tab 10, we have, we have Beth Bryson with us and we have Rio Sachetti with us. We can go into that next, and then we can go back to the correspondence on the MBTA, if you, the will of the board is that.
Whatever you, whatever you want. That's fine.
Soon as Bill gets back, we'll go to tab 10. And we, we could make them wait to the end so we have an audience, but.
I think we've made them listen to, to enough. Not that it's not riveting.
Great, Bill's back. Bill, we're going to jump over to tab 10. So first of all, Rio, I, I like to send my deepest sympathy for the passing of your dad. In my former life, I did work in the automobile field and I ran into your dad on a few occasions. And our deepest sympathy is with you and your family.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So we did receive some correspondence via email. And tonight, what we're basically doing is acknowledging that we did receive the letter from Beth Bryson and Rio Sachetti. We're going to ask our, through our town manager to review the letter and to do his due diligence and review the letter and, you know, do what he needs to do and then report back to us. But we want you to be aware that we have received it. And we're turning it over to our town administrator to review the process.
Thank you.
All right, that's why I didn't want to hold this up. Is, did I miss anything from the board? Did I miss anything on this?
No, Mr. Chair, I would just say that, you know, obviously, we, you know, our responsibility as a board who has no direct control or influence over the planning board, but it is our duty as the, as the, the Select Board in town, working with Kevin, to make sure that, you know, the meetings are run a certain way and that all parties involved have, you know, equal and fair opportunity to present facts in cases. You know, call experts such as attorneys or, you know, whoever. So that's the reason that we are, you know, taking a step the Chip and Botash acknowledged that we're taking. So we've charged our town manager, who is very competent, you know, to take a look at the situation, to talk to you and Mrs. Bryson and your attorney, to hear your concerns, to levy those concerns against, you know, what the, the members of the planning board and our town planner say, and then to make sure that the process is fair and equitable. So I just, I just want to make sure that you understand that's what we're charging Kevin to do.
No, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to, to read it. It means a lot. We put a lot of time and effort into it. So, no, thank you. That's really it.
You're welcome, Reano. Again, sorry for your loss.
No further questions from me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Well, thank you both, and you'll be hearing from Kevin. And we look forward to Kevin's review.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go up to tab 3. At this time, the chair maintained a motion to accept a gift donation for holiday lights in the amount of $6,729.27 from the Lions Club.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectman Gallo, any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Botash? Yes, Select Board, Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington?
You're muted, Billy.
You want to give us a thumbs up while you figure it out? Or thumbs down?
Harrington, yes.
All right, Select Board Member Rose?
Rose, yes.
We got past 5-0, and we are very grateful to the Lions Club for their generous donation. We actually have a letter. We're, we're receiving a gift of a sweat pop bench from the Rantham 350th Anniversary Committee. And I would ask, and and no disrespect to Bill, but I'm going to ask a member of that committee to read that letter. Select Board Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You have to bear with me as I scroll back to find it.
Not a problem. That's why I have 10 screens here.
Hold on here. Okay. This is dated March 13th, 2024. To the Administration Office, Board of Selectmen, 79 South Street, Mathem, Mass. 2093. RE Rantham 350th Donation to Kevin and Joe. The Rantham 350th Anniversary Committee is delighted to inform you that we have voted to fund $3,500 for benches as part of their renovated sweat park. Mike King has indicated that the donation is permissible as long as the benches include a recognition that they were a gift from the Rantham 350th Committee or some permanent recognition is given at the park, even if, if not specifically on the benches. The committee has appreciated the support of the Selectmen and the Selectmen's Office, and we are grateful that we can contribute in a way to a park named after the town's greatest benefactor. Regards, Ed and Cindy. Carbon copy to Mike King.
All right, thank you. That's, it's such a great gift, you know, it's just, it's like this, the 350th celebrations keep going on and on. And it's, as I look back, it's been, it's been a great year and it's even getting longer. So any comments from the board? We thank you, Jim, for being part of that committee, represented the board of Selectmen well, the Select Board well. And we thank you for all you did. I still have the pictures on my desk of us from the 350th Gala. And when things get tough at work, I look at them and it puts a big smile on my face to see all of these. And also to see the picture of Tim with all of us, thousands and significant others makes me.
First husband. I would just, I would just like to say, you know, thank you to the 350th Committee. I think that the park benches and will be, you know, something that people can reflect on. It won't be just. will be, you know, something that people can reflect on. It won't be just a picture that will disappear. It will be forever there. And I think that's a beautiful gift to the town. So thank you very much.
Well done.
Anybody else? But this time, the chairman taken a motion to accept the gift donation for benches, for, for the donation of benches for sweat park in the amount of $3,500 from the 350th Anniversary Committee.
So moved.
Motion made by selectman Anderson, seconded by selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none. We'll do a roll call vote. Selectboard member Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectboard member Botesh, yes. Selectboard member Gallo?
Gallo, yes.
Selectboard member Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
And selectboard member Rose?
Rose, yes.
Right, that passed five zero. And once again, thank you to the 350th. At this time, chair and taken a motion to reappoint Karen Smith to the Board of Writers for a term effective immediately expiring on March 31st, 2027. So motion made by selectman Harrington, seconded by selectman Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Being none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Selectboard member Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectboard member Botesh, yes. Selectboard member Gallo?
Gallo, yes.
Selectboard member Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
And selectboard member Rose?
Rose, yes.
All right, so that passed five zero. Let's jump down to tab nine. So we're gonna go back to the MBT communities. And we have received some correspondence from Representative Marcus Vaughn, State Senator Rebecca Roche. We receive correspondence from Resident Melissa Folsom, Resident Joe Stewart, a Massachusetts citizen, and from Kevin Kelly and you know, I would like to read some of these into the record. I know one of them is quite lengthy. But you know, if I will leave it up to the clerk if he would like to take them all or share them, it's up to him.
Whatever the will of the board, sir.
Why don't you start with select, with state rep Marcus Vaughn?
Come off the mass, dear Rentham Select Board. Thank you for your letter regarding the MBTA housing bill and the challenges it presents to the town of Rentham. I want to assure you that I fully understand and share your concerns about preserving the unique character of our community while also addressing the housing needs for our residents. The mandate in its current form does not consider the needs of each town. Simply mandating a blanket policy across the Commonwealth is not sustainable as each and every community is an individual and unique. And I fully understand that adjustments need to be made to accommodate our town. I am proud to stand with you in advocating for waivers and modifications to the current stature that would alleviate the strain on our infrastructure and resources. As a resident of Rentham myself, I deeply appreciate the values that make our town special. My decision, along with my wife, to make Rentham our home was not merely based on convenience or affordability. It was deliberate choice to be part of a community that cherishes tradition, neighborliness, and the quality of life. The unchecked development mandate by the current housing requirement threatens to undermine the very essence of what makes Rentham so special. Rentham is more than just a place to live. It's a tight knit community where families come together to celebrate. Children grow up surrounded by caring neighbors and the spirit of unity thrives. Preserving our small town charm is essential, not only for the sake of nostalgia, but also as an investment in the future of our community and the well-being of generations to come. Rest assured, as your elected official, I will continue to fight alongside you to ensure that Rentham retains its unique identity and remains a place we are all proud to call home. Sincerely, Marcus Vaughn, State Rep, 9th Norfolk District.
Excellent. Thank you. Would somebody like to read the letter from Senator Roche?
Mr. Chair, I'll take that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this is from Senator Rebecca Roche, dated March 8th, 2024. Via email only to the town of Rentham Select Board, 79 South Street, Rentham, Mass. 2093. RE MBTA Communities Act. Dear Chair Botesh, Vice Chair Gallo, Clerk Harrington, and Members Anderson and Rose. I write in response to your letter dated February 27th, 2024. It's been a pleasure and privilege to represent the town of Rentham in the State Senate to join you and your entire Rentham community for many celebrations in momentous occasion. I applaud your efforts to uplift and enhance the town, including the completion of the Rentham Master Plan in 2022, which contains multiple strong strategies for increasing the housing supply. I too have heard the same concerns from Rentham residents that you mentioned in your letter. Seniors cannot afford to stay in their chosen community. Young adults who grew up in town cannot afford to buy homes in the community and more, and I appreciate the collective recognition of the housing shortage before. I am happy to connect you and the town administrator with personnel in the Executive Office of Housing and Liberal Communities to discuss your strategies to increase housing stock, including those in the master plan with particular respect to compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, which Governor Charlie Baker signed the law on in 2021. I believe the ELOC team would be able to answer your questions and assist you in that effort. Please let me know if you would like me to proceed, also to aid me in making this connection and to help me understand some of your concerns. I would appreciate understanding the data and calculation behind 13% population increase you referenced. Thank you again for your leadership and service to the people of Rentham. Yours in service, Senator Rebecca Roche.
Thank you, Jim. We have a letter from Ms. Folsom. Would somebody like to read that email?
I'll take that one.
Show you what I want to take that one. Go ahead.
Melissa Folsom, I find Rentham is in dire need of affordable housing for families and young singles in particular. We love many units. I think that's supposed to say we have many units, but I don't want to speak for her. The letter reads, we love many units of elder housing already. I think this must be taken into, into account when the MBTA area housing is built. Melissa Folsom, 50, Chestnut Street, Rentham.
Two left. Michelle, pick your poison.
I'll take Joe Stewart. Dear Select Board Members, I'm writing about the MBTA Communities Program. I understand some people worry about future costs, but remember the law says we have to follow it. Instead of breaking the law, I suggest we work with the governor and our representatives to get more funding for Rentham. This would be legal, follow your responsibility as our representatives and bring money to our town. Here are some specific ideas to fight for. Move school funding from property taxes to state income taxes, so everyone shares the cost. Fund school transportation based on projections, not after the fact. Make the state fully fund school transportation as promised. I focused on schools because they're our biggest expense and the burden has shifted from everyone paying state income tax to mostly local property taxes. I appreciate the work of our planning board consultant and the director of planning and economic development. The proposed MBTA zone locations make sense and follow the law. Good job. Finally, some worry about new residents, but even though we have multifamily zoning, no new buildings have started. It's uncertain if developers will even buy or build anything. Thank you. Joe Stewart, 65 Hickory Road.
Okay. And I'm gonna take this one from a Massachusetts citizen. Dear Rentham Select Board Members, I've done an analysis of the MBTA Community Housing Requirements last year and sent it to every state representative and senator in hopes that they would change some of the things that made it so unfair to some towns and cities. With the exception of the mixed use requirement, no significant change, changes were made, although not up to date for the, for the later changes to the law. The analysis is still relevant and attached and attached here, which we do have, and it's quite lengthy, in hopes that it will help frame for an argument, although I suspect that you will eventually succumb to the pressures of the governor's office. You probably have the right to fight this. Look through your underlying data. Rentham appears to neither in the top nor the bottom, but rather close to the net break even. However, since this is excludes the impact of police fire, public work, and other cost MBTA community housing will likely cost Rentham. It's a good bit as well as so many other towns and cities. Good luck, a concerned Massachusetts resident. Do we have one more?
We do, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm gonna be reading one to, another one, so I would like you to, Bill, would you take this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is an email. Hi Amanda, could you, from, it's an email from Chairman Botesh through Amanda. It says, hi Amanda, could you share this with the board? My best, Joe. Begin forward messaging. Caution, caution, this message was sent from outside your organization. Hello, Joseph. My name is Kevin Kelly, a longtime Rentham resident living on Clock Road. Myself and everyone I know around town here are opposed to this MBTA zoning law, particularly since we don't have any such service in Rentham. But even if we did, it would seem ridiculous that the state finds it appropriate to threaten us with our own money. We hope you all vote it down. Thanks for your time. Kevin Kelly.
Thank you. So, you know, we've read these into the record. We want to be public, so people will see. We do have support for the MBTA. We have people who are against it. So you know, it's, it's our job to cipher all these letters and do what's best for the community as a whole. Any other comments from the board? All right, being none. Thank you for everybody for participating. We're gonna jump over to tab 11. And this is, this is the evaluation of Kevin Sweet. So Kevin, I promise you I have my box of tissues here. I hope you have yours close. So this is a recap of Kevin's evaluation. So this letter is to, and you're all gonna get a copy of this, Vice Chair Chris Gallo, Clerk William Harrington, Board Member James Anderson, Board Member Michelle Roast, Town Manager Kevin Sweet. 2024 Performance Evaluation of Town Manager Kevin Sweet, presented by Select Board Chair Joseph Botesh. Mr. Sweet joined the town of Rentham as our town administrator on February 14th, 2018. After a long and rigorous search that spanned several months, several months, the search committee has had, the search committee was composed of town residents with vast backgrounds and professions. The interview process included department heads along with boards committees, boards and committee chairs, then finally by the, by the select board. The finalists were highly qualified and well-vetted and one candidate who stood above and beyond the rest was Kevin Sweet. Kevin came to our community after 10 years stint as the town administrator in Maynard and for four years prior in Taunton Health Emergency Response Position. Kevin's qualifications, along with his impressive education, made him the perfect candidate to take Rentham into the future. To create Kevin's evaluation, the Rentham Select Board spent weeks completing comprehensive performance evaluations and then having one-on-one meetings with him. The evaluations focused on 10 key categories related to the day-to-day duties of the town manager. These categories included individual characteristics, professional skills and status, relationships with electric, elected, elected members of the governing body, policy, execution, reporting, citizen relationship, staffing supervision, fiscal management, and community. Kevin ranked highly in all these areas. And in many of, he achieved unanimous perfect score of five. Kevin's strong grades were an individual charact, Kevin's strongest grades were individual characteristics and fiscal management and with the remaining categories closed behind. Kevin's highlights on his, Kevin was highlighted on his work ethic, work ethic, intelligence, and his ability to lead and to empower subordinates. He was also commended on his knowledge of local and state government and his many individual achievements of both his and his improvements in the board's objectives and goals. In addition, another strength shared by many of the board members was his engagement with the community, boards and the committees. Tabulating the scores from Jim, Chris, Bill, Michelle, and myself, it averaged to an impressive score of 4.92, which translates to a perfect evaluation of excellence. A performance evaluation of excellence, which represents and almost always exceeds in performs, performance standards. We congratulate Kevin on his outstanding performance and we thank him for his dedication to the town. Sincerely, Joseph F. Botesh II, Rentham Select Board Chair. So that was his evaluation, 4.92. Any comments, Jim?
First of all, well stated. I thought you were right on target. And Kevin, as, you know, congratulations and I hope you keep up the good work.
All right. Selectboard member Gallo?
Yep, same. Great job on the letter. Great job, Kevin. We have a great team. Appreciate all you do for us and let's keep, let's keep things moving strong. So, thank you.
Selectboard member Harrington?
Yeah, Kevin, you know, you do a great job. Very, very proud to work with you and have you work for the town. Keep, keep up the good work and look forward to having you sign on for many more years. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, selectboard member Rose?
I think the letter and the summary says it all. Thank you, Kevin, for the work that you do for the town. It's a pleasure to work with you.
Well, thanks, Michelle.
Kevin, I really, I really enjoy working with you. And it was something I found and I think I shared with you a long time ago, but as, as you know, I'm a numbers guy and I graphed out all the reviews and I shared it with Michelle the other day. I found it on my computer. And I think your, your, your score, when we hired you from all, all the, the interviews, was 4.86. So you, you've improved to 4.92, so we congratulate you. Kevin, thank you.
I appreciate everybody's, you know, sincerity and, you know, straightforward. I think we had some great discussions during the review process and all of you took it serious and I appreciate that feedback. Thank you, Joe, for your summarization and appreciate the letter and look forward to continuing, continuing on. So, thank you.
All right, there will be a 24 by 36 copy of this printed and framed for you to explain. No, I'm kidding. So at this time, the chair would approve, would make a motion to approve the 2024 Annual Performance Evaluation of Town Manager Kevin Sweet as presented. The motion made by selectman Gallo, seconded by selectman Harrington. Is there any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectboard member Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectboard member Botesh, yes. Selectboard member Gallo?
Gallo, yes.
Selectboard member Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
And selectboard member Rose?
Rose, yes.
That passed five zero. Excellent. Okay, let's jump over to, we have the debt excluding, debt exclusion ballot question. And this is going to be on the November, I mean, sorry, the April 1st election. In our packet, there is a a breakdown of the town's responsibility for this debt and you know, debt exclusion is, and, and the capital improvements we've made to Rentham Elementary, Town Hall, Public Library, we're not done as a debt exclusion. And I think Jim can attest to this. When we didn't do a debt exclusion for those projects, the impact on the operating budget was, was crazy. When I joined in 2010, we had the smallest police force we had ever had. We had the smallest smallest fire department, DPW was small, staffing at the school was small. And, and the one thing I was running on was to save our trash barrel. We're getting that taken away because we used most of our money to pay debt and not provide services to our community. So I understand the importance of a debt exclusion and how important it can may be. And I would, I would, I think, you know, Michelle, you were on the school committee during this time and you knew what the budget cuts were like. Bill, you, you, you know, you, you remember the community and you were active. Chris, you were fairly new, but it was tough. It was really tough to ask this town to take a big chunk of the revenue we had to operate this town and pay the debt. So Jim, if you could just speak from your experience as our police chief during these times?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with that being said, there were, you know, severe, you know, budget cuts. you know, budget cuts and services were, were limited. And we got to the point where, um, you know, we, we were basically just chasing calls. Uh, we didn't have the, the manpower to do a lot of follow-up work. Now, we had to take detectives, put them out on the street, uh, just to cover calls. So, um, yeah, it was, it was severe. And, uh, you know, I, one thing I don't want to see is have that happen again, uh, especially to our, to our community, who depends on public safety, they depend on the schools, educating their kids. So, uh, you know, to me, to me, the, the debt exclusion is the way to go.
And, and Jim, there's one thing that stuck out in my mind from when I first started on the select board is you had a police officer who transferred, transferred here from Fall River.
Correct.
And what you said to me is you felt safer in Fall River than you felt here.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. And if we have time for a quick story, now, he, he was on the midnight shift. There was, there were two guys, uh, scheduled that night for the midnight. They had a drunk driving arrest on Route One at about one-thirty in the morning. And at the same time, we had a domestic involving a knife. And so, one officer, the protocols have two officers with, with each arrest. Couldn't do that, so one officer took the, 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 the arrest back to the station for, for booking. Uh, the other officer, he responded to the domestic with a knife. He ended up taking, um, the guy into custody at gunpoint because the guy charged at him with, with a knife. And, um, the one thing that he ended up going back to Fall River because he said, you know, in Fall River, they, they are shooting, stabbings weekly. But he knows when he goes through that door, he's got eight guys behind him. Where in Rantham, he's either got one guy or nobody behind him. So, uh, that was the the gist of that, of that story, and that's how, you know, once budget got a little bit better, we were able to get additional manpower.
Select Board Member Gallo?
Uh, nothing to say, Mr. Chair. It would be catastrophic for us not to, uh, you know, uh, debt, fund this via debt exclusion. Uh, we cannot fund this through the operating budget without having huge cuts to service. I don't want to see that happen. I'm telling everyone I know that they, you know, in my humble opinion, we need to vote debt exclusion. Thank you.
Select Board Member Harrington?
Yeah, I think it was Jared, uh, just nothing really to add other than, you know, to, to follow it very closely, very carefully. Uh, you know, you're talking about a hundred and fifty-six dollars annually on your taxes, which is actually less because of the King Philip School coming off. Uh, so, you know, it's something that needs to be done, and the other departments in the town, public safety, school, DPW, the services should not be affected by this. It's, it's something that needs to be passed. The town voted to pay for our fair share. Now we need to pay for it.
Select Board Member Roast, you were on the school committee when we were paying for services out of the, uh, out of the levy, and, uh, I'm sure it was tough getting that budget.
It was very difficult, and some very difficult decisions had to be made, and, um, not an easy thing to do because it impacts everyone involved from students to administration to teachers to services. So, all in agreement with fellow select board members' comments. Um, I just encourage everyone to become educated on this. Do the research, listen to what we've stated, and, uh, support it.
Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I particularly wanted to keep this fresh on an agenda. Um, as you know, we've, we've had discussions on this, um, over this last several months. Um, as Selectman Harrington pointed out, um, the building is coming no matter what. The project is being built no matter what. Um, so we're forced to pay for it. Um, so what we're asking, um, just want to highlight that we've done, trying to do a lot of public information with regards to this. There is a direct, um, and to the point where, um, Amanda's been great with her skills and relatedness to, uh, putting together infographics and preparing some of this media outreach and, uh, public relations type of, uh, stuff. So what we've done is we've created a static link where nobody has to look. Um, large at the top banner of the town's website, um, Rantham.gov. Click that box link. Uh, it'll take you to all of the details, including a narrative of what was discussed tonight. This, it, it's complicated. I get it. It's, it's, uh, it's not something that happens frequently. Uh, most people do not understand what Proposition Two and a Half even means. Um, so this is an opportunity, um, as Select Board Member Roast said, to educate yourself on what it is we're talking about. So I want to encourage everybody to go to the town website for that information. We've, we've also done a press release, um, through our public relations firm, JGPR, um, that has gone out. Um, information with regards to that as well, um, and continue to, uh, answer questions as they come in. Just a couple of quick points that I, I do want to highlight for those that are listening um, with regards to the Tri-County discussion tonight. Um, Rantham's Proposition Two and a Half increase is approximately a million dollars. The town conservatively estimates new growth at about five hundred thousand. This means there's a one point five million dollars in new available tax revenue annually. That's it. Tri-County debt service would cost the town approximately nine hundred thousand within that levy limit. That would leave about six hundred thousand dollars to fund other budgetary increases. The Rantham Elementary School FY twenty-five budget increase request alone was eight hundred thousand dollars. Again, that would leave, if have to be funded within the actual levy limit, a six hundred thousand dollars to fund all of our non-discretionary costs and operations. The elementary school budget request alone for FY twenty-five was eight hundred thousand dollars. This highlights the issue of absorbing the Tri-County's debt service within the tax levy. There would not be enough funding for education budgetary increases, let alone public safety, health insurance, retirement, and those that are non-discretionary items. So, I, I don't want to overdramatize this, but I want to stress the fact that there's no questions asked, that there's no other place to get it. When you look at the size of the town's budget, education being the, the largest cost for the community, followed by public safety. Um, to, to be able to address that kind of payment um, within the, within the levy limit is going to impact services, as we've said tonight. So, again, just reiterating, you have questions, absolutely can call our office. Um, I would encourage everybody to go to the town website, stay tuned in, into Ranthamnews.com, Rantham.gov, the website, and just, you know, be familiar with it. Um, and just in closing, the town supported this number one out of the eleven communities at seventy-nine percent, almost eighty percent. Now you need the support to pay for it, um, through this. So I appreciate the time, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer any questions. Um, we did provide significantly more in your packet. Um, again, just reiterating, um, the, the issue with, uh, kind of where the debt leans. I will say approval of this debt exclusion, that we only have one year of an overlap of the, um, which Selectman Harrington mentioned, where we're paying both the King Philip, um, High School as well as this, the Tri-County debt, um, and then the King Philip debt rolls off the next year in FY twenty-seven. So, if approved, that FY twenty-seven, uh, would be the only debt exclusion at this time, um, for, for this building. So that, that, uh, actual debt exclusion, uh, annual cost to the residents, uh, to our commercial properties, and our taxpayers would, uh, drops down fairly significantly. You can see what that breakdown is. We've made sure to point out all these things and highlight that uh, in those areas. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions for the Town Administrator?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I have is a comment. I just want to be careful not to paint a picture that that debt's rolling off, and there's no other debt coming. We all know that there's a school that they're talking about being built, albeit a fifty percent match. There's still going to be a significant, uh, you know, a, a, a debt that's going to need to be raised for that as well. And we are also discussing a DPW building. So I just don't want to sell people on the fact that, oh, don't worry about it. There's all this other debt rolling off when in actuality, we're potentially going to have more funding needed for the school and then potentially a DPW facility in short order. So I just caution us to be very transparent on those.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to tab fourteen. You have any update in the budget, Kevin?
Um, no, Mr. Chair, nothing, uh, nothing pressing this evening. Um, you will have your budget presentation, budget delivery at our next meeting. Um, we've been working, uh, particularly, um, you know, myself and Finance Director Mike King, um, his office through the Assistant Town Accountant, Emily has, uh, done a great job. We're really putting a lot of effort into this, um, continuing to see, you know, to create a, a balanced budget, a financially stable budget, and one that, um, you know, that, that maintains and enhances our services. So I look forward to presenting that and having discussions at that time. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tab fifteen, your Town Administrator's report.
Yeah, just one update, um, item, um, with regards to a couple of things, just kind of, I don't want to go backwards and spend too much time, but I do want to just call out um, the guidance that Amanda has spent, um, showing sort of step-two tutorials on the MAPC mapping thing related to the MBTA. Um, she did a great job with that. Um, and really kind of walks you through how to use that tool. Um, we'll continue to push out information about that. Um, you have a sample of that now, but we'll be able to provide that. So residents that want to go directly to the MBTA, uh, Communities page on the website, they'll be able to play around with that tool, identify parcels, which kind of ranks and makes available, um, as well as all of the information that, there's been discussions around and information. You can find all of that on the MBTA, um, Communities page. I just wanted to just mention and thank Amanda for her work on that and trying to make it as simple uh, for folks to follow as possible. Um, and then the only other thing I had is I just want to acknowledge and thank Norfolk, uh, County for their, uh, generous approval of requests that have made to them for, um, a replacement vehicle for a two thousand and twelve Ford Explorer uh, for the Rantham Fire Department, which is a Car Three Advanced Level Class Five ambulance. Um, again, you know, as, as far as an ALS Advanced Level Intercept Vehicle, um, which essentially suffered a catastrophic failure of the subframe. Um, after looking at it from, uh, Franklin Ford and the review of it was deemed, uh, unworthy and unfit to be on the road. Um, additionally, the exhaust system and electronic, uh, control module were failing. Um, the vehicle had been deemed dangerous and unfit to drive. Uh, the advice of technicians and an emergency vehicle advisor, the vehicle had, had been dis, uh, decommissioned. The vehicle, uh, was outfitted with advanced level medications and equipment and licensed again as a Class Five, uh, non-transport ambulance. So, as you can, uh, certainly owed us nothing. Uh, when you look at it from vehicle perspective, and certainly in New England weather and salt, I mean, again, a two thousand and twelve or in two thousand and twenty-four, probably went into service in two thousand and eleven. Um, so we've certainly have gotten, and I know it, it's gone through prior fire chiefs, um, hand-me-downs and renditions. So, you know, certainly the town has gotten its use out of it. But Norfolk County, uh, approved the request um, to replace it with a, uh, new Ford Intercept off the state bid list. The total cost, uh, including outfit of just over fifty thousand dollars. Um, they have awarded that. They voted on that. They approved our application. Um, the vehicle is being outfitted and, um, lay decal, the like, um, provided those, uh, outfit and replacement for the ALS, um, level. And we'll have a new vehicle at no cost to, uh, Rantham taxpayers um, directly, uh, here locally, and, and thank, uh, the Norfolk County Commissioners for recognizing the need um, for such a vehicle and, and the quick response. Um, you know, we, this came about unexpectedly on our part. Um, it had been on our capital plan certainly to be replaced, so we knew at some point it was going to have to be, and, uh, the ability to be able to react without having appropriated funds locally to be able to address it. Um, the timeliness that they took, the seriousness they took, and ultimately fully funding it. Um, just want to acknowledge and recognizing that, um, they may at some point as the weather warms up in the spring, look to kind of do a, a check presentation or some kind of thing with, uh, our elected officials. And I, I told them, we would certainly, uh, welcome them to do that, and we, you know, encourage it, and, you know, we'd like to do that. So just, uh, public recognition of, of that, and I know, uh, the chief, um, echoes that and, uh, was thrilled to be able to, you know, to replace that vehicle as quickly as, as we are able to do so. So, um, that's all I have, uh, for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a note, uh, Chris, if you could remind Phil Jordan, when we do the check presentation, if you'd like to watch us, because he's so envious of our ribbon cuttings.
We'll invite him.
Okay. Any questions for the Town Administrator? Jim?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm all set. Good job, Cass.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good job. Nice job. That's awesome news. Thank you.
Bill?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chair.
No questions, just great news. Thank you.
So before I turn the meeting over to Select Board Member Anderson, I just want to thank Chris and Bill, I mean, Chris and Jim, for the last three years of service. I, you, you, you really, uh, added to this board. We wish you luck on your reelection, because I think right now the Town of Rantham is being served well by a great board. Uh, and, and it's all because of the members of this board who work hard and diligent for the residents. Proven tonight, standing up to, uh, the governor's representative uh, on, and speaking how you feel, and I think the residents are, are, are happy, which is good. And I hope they, they have your support, because we'd love to see you back on April second. So please vote on the election, April first, and, and to all the residents, please do your homework and consider voting for Chris and Jim, because they really make a great team with us. So, thank you.
They're outstanding.
I didn't realize this could be our last meeting, Jim.
No, Jeff.
For the record, it won't be.
Agreed, agreed. So, uh, hey, listen, if I could just say this. Happy to serve. I've learned a lot over the last three years. It's been an awesome, um, it's been a great ride. You know, I love the fact that this board is so direct with one another. We put, we don't pull punches. We call it how it is. We love each other. At the end of the day, we shake hands and move forward. Uh, it's been a pleasure to serve. Uh, I, I've learned a lot from each and every one of you, and, uh, whatever happens, uh, we have a great community here and one worth, uh, fighting for. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Well said.
Great. Select Board Member Anderson, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, motion to adjourn this, this fabulous meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right, I was gonna say Selectman Gallo, because it could be his last second.
It could, yeah. I will turn it over. I will turn it over to Frank. Frank, go ahead.
All right. A motion made by Select Board Member Anderson and seconded by Select Board Member Frank Gallo. Do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
And, and Select Board Member Botesh is a yes. Select Board Member Gallo?
Gallo's a yes.
Select Board Member Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Roast?
Roast is a yes.
All right. Well, you guys have a great night and
You too.
both luck, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.